Tuesday, April fifteenth. Hope everybody got their licenses in. A meeting of the Monmouth City Council. And fellas, roll call please.
Counselor Carey.
Here.
Counselor Coons.
Here.
Counselor Meyer.
Here.
Counselor Milligan.
Here.
Counselor Schaefer.
Here.
Counselor Silvernagle.
Here.
Mayor Oberst.
Here. All rise for the flag, salute please.
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with thirteen justices for all.
Thank you all. It's nice having the added note of youth and the sound of the pledge line. That's very noticeable, nice. Consent calendar tonight consists of minutes from the council meeting of April first and the work session from that same night. If I could have motion to approve.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And we'll adopt those two sets of minutes. We have a couple of presentations tonight, and I'm going to invert the written agenda and invite the students from Ash Creek School to come up and talk to us about their project. So if you all would come on up to the front table here and fill us in on what you've got going. And as I warned you ahead of time, I need you all to give us your names and city for the record. And we'll start.
My name is Beth Beener and I live in Monmouth.
Riley Elliott, Monmouth.
My name is Amy Ritchie and I live in Monmouth.
My name is Natalie Wells and I live in Monmouth.
And my name is Sean Meeam and I teach, I'm the fifth grade teacher that these wonderful students are in. We come to you tonight with some information for a big project that we're working on. And I'm here with my student teacher, Brian Ross, who has helped spearhead this project. And I'll give the floor to these very capable young people.
Hello, my name is Amy.
I'm Natalie.
I'm Riley.
And I'm Beth.
And we are the Monmouth City Council group. We are four students from Ash Creek Elementary School to go from kindergarten through fifth grade at this school. We would like to introduce a video that gives you more details, that gives you details about this project.
Apologize for the lack of sound. There is sound to it.
To leave the legacy, we've decided to build a trail around the perimeter of our school's property. Those black lines show where the trail will be built. The total wood chip trail will be about five feet long and 2,375 feet, wait. (laughing). Five feet wide and 2,375 feet long. We are planning to have a sign built by Service Graphics and Central High School's metal shop students. This is what the sign will look like. This is what the structures were made of. We will need about fifty units of hog fuel. It will be about three trunks. Central High School's metal shop students will build a metal bench and probably a concrete picnic table. Educational benefits for this trail are civic responsibility, math, public speaking, writing, science, and much, much more. Things that you might see on the trail, you might find bunnies, eagles, blue herons, nutrients, eggs, and other cool animals. There will be two very important dates, May seventeenth, eight AM, and June second, eight to ten AM. And on May seventeenth, we will spread the hog fuel with community help. And on June second will be the day that the community and school will see the opening of the trail.
Our classes committees have obtained permission by the thirteen, the School District Thirteen J. School Board, Superintendent Buzz and Business Manager Coons, Mar Brothers Hog Fuel, Athletic Director Mr. Hedrick, Torek Moen School District Landscaping, Mr. Neville's CHS Students Metal Shop, Ace's Parent, Ash Creek's Parent Club, our Principal, Mr. Harlow, Mr. Peters, the Sequoia Stone Scapes Incorporated, and Mr. Spary, Sooscape.
Thanks for having us. This has been a great experience.
Thank you. Council, do you all have questions for our student? Who came up with this? Where did this come from?
Mr. Green, teacher had a dream.
Oh, no. Very good.
I would just like to commend you for your excellent presentation. And I'm sure there was a few other kids involved with this in the behind scenes. And it's refreshing to have your age group and any younger age groups come in here and present and do such a fantastic job presenting. And it sounds like you've got all your bases covered and a well, well-done job. So thank you for coming in.
I have a fourth grader and I don't, I've never had a PowerPoint presentation by a fifth grader, so that's a burden.
I can't tell you how many conferences I've gone to where people try to switch between a slideshow and a movie, and it takes them like five minutes. Just amazing. That was really good.
Good job.
And I'd also like to mention the participation of Brian Ross, a Central High School graduate himself and now a student teacher. And hopefully, we'll be able to keep him in the community to assist these younger people in their presentation and their project.
Steve, John?
There are some expenses related to this. How are those going to be managed with all of those people that you indicated that are going to be, have signed off and will be supportive of that?
The school district will help pay for the hog bill and possibly the sign and the
concrete picnic table and the bench. And we're hoping to use some fundraiser money.
You guys gonna get out there and shovel hog fuel?
Yes.
And they got a discount on the hog fuel. They got a special place on that from Mark.
I'm glad that path turned out to be really long and narrow instead of really short and long.
(laughing).
Blackberries. They're round.
Yeah, good work, kids.
Yep, absolutely.
And, you know, we always have to ask this, the money question, and it sounds as though you've got, you know, you've got all the pieces put together on that as you should. And I know there's been some adult assistance on that, and that's great as well. So it's a great learning experience for you, it sounds like, and well done.
Got a lot of community involvement.
They even checked the Monmouth sign code, make sure that's...
Very good. Darren, do you have anything you want to throw in?
No.
Just great job. Alright, thank you. And now we're going to shut down Monmouth Street. Over to the district office.
In Henry Hill.
Invite the superintendent to come forward, because he has a presentation for us as well.
See if you can top that.
Yeah, I really appreciate the planning here and having to follow that. I'll attempt to, in all possible, to return the favor.
Now, don't forget to give us your name and city for the record.
I will do that. My name is Buzz Broussard. I reside at 606 Sky Raider Drive in Independence and soon actually be moving into Monmouth. So probably in a couple of months, but I'll be fine, lies. Appreciate the opportunity to be here with you tonight. I do want to tag one thing on to the young people who are just up here, because I've had the opportunity to be with them several times. And they have actually raised a little over $5,000 themselves, that when we heard about the project, it was originally going to be targeted to a field trip that they had planned in the spring. They're still going to be able to take that field trip as we assist them. But they've been very serious about this, and I really salute them, their teacher, and their, or their student teacher as well. Mr. Mayor, council members, excuse me, thank you for the opportunity to be with you this evening. I'm here before you with a funding request that I believe is in the best interest of our communities as well as the school district. I would like to ask the City of Monmouth to collaborate with the Central School District and the City of Independence to bring the School Resource Officer Program back into the district. I've had the opportunity to work directly with SRO programs in my years as administrator in the Medford School District as well as in Hermiston. I believe that a well-conceived SRO program that includes the right officer has a tremendous benefit to the school as well as to the communities they serve. I want to emphasize two things from the statement I just made. Well-conceived and the right officer. Those are absolutely critical. I have been on the other side, poorly conceived, not the right officer, certainly not nearly as beneficial. I'm proposing that the program be a collaborative effort reviewed regularly by a joint oversight committee. Would be my expectation that this committee would need originally to establish the parameters of operation as well as data gathering expectations and points of emphasis. This committee in my mind would include the Chief of Police in Monmouth, the Chief of Police in Independence, myself, or whoever the sitting superintendent of the Central School District would be, the head of the Juvenile Department, Martin Silvernagle, and the, or the Senior Probation Officer, Rich Rolison. I've had discussions with the City of Independence and with Polk County Juvenile Department, and both are supportive of the proposal. I reviewed the information from when we've had SROs in the past in the area. And I believe that the things that we're missing are the things I'm talking about, and that is the idea of having a well-conceived program and having the right person. Well-conceived, as I was visiting with Juvenile Justice, talking about the fact, well, what we don't want to do is we don't want to just criminalize every action and just have somebody there writing a ticket. At the same time, what we want to focus on, and I'll refer to a time in the past when I was in Hermiston, when I first got there, we had a little bit of a problem. It seemed like the young men in Eastern Oregon were enjoying having fights. And so we had quite a problem with that. Well, we took a very, very hard stance in that. We focused on that. We eliminated that problem. We then would change and focus on other things. So we would work together, collaborating with that group that I talked about, to direct where the focus would be in the programs throughout the district in all five schools. I have several reasons for this request. First, there's a little more important thing that we can provide for our students or our communities than increase safety in our schools. While it is true that the presence of an SRO is no guarantee of safety, it certainly does add value to the safety component. Second, I think it creates a very positive relationship between students and law enforcement. Law enforcement is not often felt, or students can often feel like they can approach law enforcement. And I believe that that positive interaction, excuse me, results in better relations, and those relations, as the years move down the road, impact our communities more and more. I can also tell you that it allows us to solve an awful lot more crime within a city that normally would not be solved. In the case where I've experienced good SRO programs, those relationships were so unqualifiedly positive, I can't believe it. It also, though, brought us the ability to help with crimes outside of the building, outside of the district. And the one that I can think of most prominently is, it involves students, but it never involved the school district. So there was, A, nothing we could do about it, but it was occurring to our students. And what happened was a young man assumed the identity of a young woman and was soliciting boyfriends and using Facebook, social media, et cetera, and breaking tons of crimes, or tons of laws, but nothing was happening in the school presence. And as police would come to us, we were really not able to provide them any assistance because there was nothing on our servers, nothing on our websites or anything of that nature. However, the School Resource Officers were able to mention a couple of things to a couple of kids, and all of a sudden we had the name, within about an hour and a half, had the name of the individual who we thought should be questioned, and it was, in fact, that individual. So by having a relationship with students, we were able to solve that crime. Had nothing to do with the schools, even though it was the kids, but it was something that we were able to do. I think also it's a great prevention resource. We were often able to get wind of maybe a party or a tagging party or something of that nature before it were to happen. And then we're able to call somebody in, have a conversation, something of the fact that, geez, I understand there's going to be a whole bunch of kids over by the graves this evening, you know, and there might be a little bit of a party going on there. Where did you hear that? Oh, I have no idea. I just heard that. I just wanted to make sure that. I knew you're smart enough not to be there. And the word would spread very quickly, and that party or that event seemed to dissipate. So tremendous amount of prevention also. Third, actually is a concern I have, and that is, we all understand where budgets are in our county, and we all understand that we're going to have reduced law enforcement, potential law enforcement coverage. It's not going to take long for people who enjoy that reduction in service to be able to say that, hey, here's a location where we can reside where there'd be less people looking for us. And I think as you see that, you're going to see more indications of things. And I can tell you, in the last month alone, I've seen five different occasions of tagging that have occurred in the various cities, most of which was recognizable, but Cease being as she is, defined a new group, right there at Henry Hill Center. And as we go through it, it was kids that were involved in the tagging. And originally, the police officers told us, we probably can't get any information. Can you guys get to the kids? Can you reach out to the kids to find things out? And it eventually came through a relationship that involved through kids, and there was just arrest made the other day. I'm concerned that as that gets here, we need to be ahead of the curve. I happen to be in a couple of districts, one that did not get ahead of the curve and one that did get ahead of the curve. And I can tell you, if you get too far behind, it is very, very difficult to catch up to There are many other reasons why I would suggest for the program. I don't want to get into the minutia of what I think is available out there as opportunities. But I think that it's important and, you know, I just really believe in the idea and in the model that we're talking about. The model I'm proposing is a little bit unique. It's because we're unique in the area, it would include three partners and divide the SRO cost by four. Reality is, is sixty percent of the students at the, in the Central School District, and it depends, it's a little different than high school than it is in elementary school, actually it's sixty point one percent at one and fifty-nine point nine at the other. So I mean, it's a little bit of a, there's a little difference. But sixty percent of our students are from Independence, forty percent of our students are from Monmouth. And so in looking, by taking the year and splitting it into fourths, the summer is a time when there's no school, and so an officer would be available to be serving their city. During the school years, there's three sets of quarters, and during that three sets of quarters, excuse me, during that three sets of quarters, if we were to take the remaining cost of the SRO program and divide it so that the school district paid for one quarter, one of the participating cities paid for one quarter, the sponsoring city paid for the third quarter, and then the sponsoring city would pay for the fourth quarter. So in essence, what we would have is both cities would have the benefits of what an SRO program can bring both to their schools and their communities. And in the case of the sponsoring city, they would have summer as well as that. In the case of the participating city, they'd only be using, covering one quarter of the cost. The school district obviously would be getting a benefit, so we would be getting one quarter of the cost. That is unique. As you call around the state, I have probably visited with fifteen to eighteen different communities ranging in various sizes and different SROs throughout the state. That's not a model that's consistent. There is no consistent model of funding. The one that I enjoyed the most was when I talked to the ones at Medford, because they had changed dramatically. But I'm trying to build this into all three of our budgets from this aspect. In the past, we've used the COPS, it's called COPS, I'm not being irreverent. It's called the COPS Program, which is a grant program that helps fund SRO programs for three years. And in the past, that's the model that's been used. Well, what we know about grants is as soon as the grant, and they are not renewable, by the way, as soon as the grant goes away, basically the program goes away. Whereas if we can find an affordable way to be able to enhance the program, we would like to be able to do that. My ask of you tonight is your consideration to include the aforementioned allocation in your budget, as you're all in budget times. I know we are. I keep Cece busy with numbers, and you keep her busy when she's not with me, with numbers. And so I would ask you to allocate it in your budget to be applied to this program as an addition to any proposed agency budget that you would have right now, not necessarily as a reduction. What I have provided you is a sheet kind of outlining the ask. Here again, as you go through it, you would see some of the goals. I'm not going to read those goals to you. You have them in front of you. But generally, what we want to do is it is create a joint program. I've shown you the oversight committee. I've talked about them, the superintendent, the two police chiefs, the director of the Juvenile Department, and the Senior Probation Officer. The oversight would come from that group. The fiscal sponsorship would come through an intergovernmental agency agreement between the three parties, which would be the school district, the City of Independence, and the City of Monmouth. I'm estimating the cost high so that frankly, I'm not coming back to someone, go through all the work to get it done and be $5,000 low. I would much rather come back and say, gosh, we don't need thirty-five, we just need thirty, or we don't need thirty, we just need twenty-five, much more than saying, well, I was close at thirty-five, but we need $35,025. What I know from getting $25 out of Cece once the budget is done is not worth the effort. So I'm sure it's probably the same here. I'm estimating at that, the cost would be split up, that's $35,000 per quarter. And as you would look down, the total request depends upon which city you are. If you're the participant city, I'm making a request of not to exceed $35,000. If you are the sponsoring city, I'm making a request to not exceed $70,000. I appreciate the opportunity for you to be here, and I would entertain any questions that any of you would have.
I'll start. Counselor Carey.
Well, number one, it's very nice to see a representative of Central School District here. Cece's here all the time in the inner part of it. But, well, but we haven't, we don't see that. And Sean, I would extend the same to you and your fifth grade class. Thank you very much, and it's, it's refreshing and rewarding. You know, one of the things, when I came on board with the City Council, one of the first budget things that we went through, it became obvious and it was pointed out that, that in some odd, and at that time it was like twelve years, and perhaps it's more than that now, there's been no increases in the police department. While the incident reports and the crime numbers have remained relatively the same, it's hard to tell whether that's because of good community policing or whether that's because we just don't have any more officers out there. And so while I, personally, I believe the, this SRO program, that's an acronym I didn't know, but, and I know a number of people who've been in those positions before and have been very good. The question that I'll have, as, if this proceeds, is, is this our number one need in law enforcement? You know, is that how we can best spend our $70,000 or whatever it is relative to the whole community? And there are clearly, there are clearly advantages to it. You know, you get, you know, you get things stopped early and you don't have the downstream As we, as our officers get, you know, are likely going to get called into more of these fringe areas that otherwise would be covered by Polk County Sheriff, are they going to be able to, you know, what's that going to do to their workload? So it's a very legitimate request, it's a good one, it's certainly a legitimate one. As it's considered, I'm sort of tipping my hand in terms of the things that I'm going to be asking about, and I'm not asking for a response out of you more than that, just talking to my council colleagues. So thank you.
Thank you.
So having been here when we had the last SRO, the programs worked for Monmouth and Independence, provided an officer to cover that responsibility as part of their duty as an officer. The way this sounds is, and maybe I'm getting it wrong, is it looks like you want to hire somebody to the school district separate, or are we just allocating money in our own budgets that's going to cover the time for our officer to be there?
The deal, the situation, Counsel Milligan, would be that the sponsoring city would hire an officer, because that officer would be in that city half of the year. The participating city would provide one-fourth of the cost of that officer, because they are getting the, getting that type of a benefit with regards to that. The school district would pay very important of that benefit as well.
Okay. Still, I don't know that I'm getting my head wrapped around that completely yet, so...
If you're the sponsoring city, if the City of Monmouth were the sponsoring city, you would hire a Monmouth police officer. We in the school district would, assuming that the cost is $140,000, we in the school district would draw a check for $35,000 and pass it to the coffers of the City of Monmouth. The City of Independence would then draw a check of $35,000 and pass it to the coffers of the City of, of City of Monmouth. So you would have a full-time officer, and the cost directly to the City of Monmouth would be half of what the normal cost would be. Conversely, if it were to go the other direction, then the City of Monmouth would only have twenty-five percent.
Okay. That's making more clear for me, so...
We'd also have an officer for two weeks at Christmas and a week at spring break on Fridays, but we have...
Yeah, a hundred and ninety minus vacation.
And the forty... And then, I guess on top of that is that, does that include all the operating equipment for a resource officer, this hundred and forty thousand? I mean, is that vehicle, is that...
It depends on which chief that you talk to.
Okay.
In one case, it is considered high, and in another case, it's considered very appropriately. As I have visited through various agencies throughout the state, it's going to depend on your pay scale and the longevity of the officer that's serving in the position. But we felt that it was a very comfortable position.
I just was concerned that this isn't just a payroll number, but this is a total but this is a total package number that includes everything that an officer needs to do their job.
And I would suggest from the school district component to put that on if I'm negotiating at this point in time. I think that if we were to send an officer to training at the NSRO convention that happens in July, I think that's certainly something that the school district should pay for. We send them to the convention that's over in June, over in Newport, I think that's something the school district should pay for. If we send them for SWAT training or something of that nature, I'm not sure that that's something the school district should pay for. So I think there's, I don't think there's a, I'm not trying to be, trying to situation. I just don't think that there's a definite answer there. I think that has to be professionally determined.
Want to go over your thoughts on anything?
No, thank you. I understand this proposal.
So, yeah, a couple of questions. So it is tough to get through, if you can get through Cece and Scott and myself, and the rest of John, and all of us, or Darren are all numbers people to some extent. But obviously, 140 is a little bit of sticker shock, so I appreciate the not-to-exceed number. What's the process like to kind of come up with that number? And I guess mainly getting into the oversight. I appreciate and understand a little bit with the Juvenile Department, but I guess I look at it as if we've got three entities putting in money, and my Oversight Committee has two people that aren't putting in a dollar, and they're potentially. So walk me through why we have two partners putting in zero dollars that carry two seats where people putting in money have less.
In essence, the Juvenile Department is the end source for the clients that we would develop. And as the end source, they are going to determine how.
Or prevent, though.
Or prevention. They're either going to prevent or determine. They have to be involved in what it is that we're going to be able to emphasize. And so what you're talking about there, more than anything, is determining what are the, what programs are we going to follow? What, one year, as an example, I talked about the fighting. We got that under control about mid-year, and the remainder of that year was very minimal. So the following year, we focused on attendance. Well, attendance is not something the Juvenile Department normally emphasizes or will do anything to support. You can't usually get PO or support through district attorneys and things of that nature. But we worked with that group to emphasize, you know, a point of emphasis, because areas that we wanted to approve. So when you're talking about oversight, in that sense, you're talking about how we're going to direct our services, when we're going to be pinpointing, how much education, what's the type of education that we are going to be able to provide? What are the in-classroom components of the SRO program that we're going to be able to offer? And those types of things, I would suggest, would both chiefs, I would be surprised if both chiefs weren't feeling supported by having the Juvenile Department present and part of that process.
So the other question is, is the selecting the officer. Obviously, the sponsoring city versus the participating, you know, we kind of know where that's going to go. How do you envision that process going of getting the right, you know, fit? Is that something where you guys want to make that recommendation and say, or how do you see that? How do you envision that? Maybe you haven't thought that totally through, but.
Oh, yes, I have.
Okay. Why don't you tell me about that?
I would see the three major contributors, financial contributors, as being the ones that would be the, whether it would be a three-man team, I don't know. I'm not going to tell anyone how to hire. This is a police officer hire. And what I can tell you is that, in essence, we would be part of that hire. And if we, if it's not the right person, we have the option to not contribute the money, at which time the hire won't occur.
So the Oversight Committee wouldn't necessarily be in charge of the hiring committee? It'd be different?
No. Hiring would be done by the people that are contributing, that are contributing participants.
Okay. And one last question I'll let either to talk is, obviously, different budget times. You guys have budget issues, you know, whether it's us or Independence or whatever. Would this be kind of year by year, or would you want a two-year commitment? Because obviously, you don't want it to change, and then, you know, how would it go as far as if you do get into different budgeting issues where the $70,000 participant maybe wants to drop to the thirty-five, and you'd need to do that in advance? Have you thought any of that through?
I've worked through it, obviously. The one thing, I mean, it's just like if we were to hire a teacher, it's difficult. You have to go through the riffing process. And both, I would assume both departments and both cities have processes to do that.
Sure.
Understanding that the sponsoring city could operate under that process if their, if their budget was so impacted that they needed to do that. I think by not using grant funds in your startup, you're able to use the grant funds down the road if that became a necessity. So I think those things become potential as well.
So you're still going to pursue grant funds even though, okay?
You're going to use it as a supplemental item. And I think the key thing is also data, information. Where I've seen programs that collect information, they are able to progress and continue to find some type of support funding through grants, institutions, and foundations. And I think you have those opportunities then to get something moving. By not using it in the startup phase, it remains available to be done along.
Well, I definitely, on the surface, like a definite good idea, and obviously, there's some details to be worked out, so see where it goes.
Buzz, thanks for coming. Appreciate this presentation, and I think I've had all my questions answered. So I will pass on to Darren, just like to extend my thank you. Great to see the school district here.
Please.
Great. You know, I guess my thought, I remember years and years ago, it kind of dates me, I suppose, when Craig, I believe it was Craig Davis, that was involved for many, many years. And I remember at least my daughter in school and the rapport that was there and those kinds of things with the kids. I guess I see this as a very much a win-win. So I'd like to see a budget for it and figure out how to make it work. So I guess I'm behind it in the sense that it makes good sense to me. I appreciate your explanation on it and having thought through it in advance and really proposing it in a very common, understandable method for us to really work through it, I guess, with the City of Independence as well one day. So, thanks, Buzz.
Thank you.
I think I've had my questions answered, except to turn to Scott. And how would you proceed from here with our budget process and so on?
We can just add as an item in our budget process.
And could you bring us a budget with this as an option?
Yep, just like we do.
Very good.
The last comment I'd like to make all again. It's one that Wayne of the School District kept in face. And it's, it's a question that, when you think of it ahead of time, you go, "That makes sense. Why would you even think about that?" But you don't think of it ahead of time. When you think of it, you need to think of it when the budget's tight. And I would suggest in the, I would consider the law, in the SRO program and the law enforcement area to be the same as a behavioral classroom at schools. When we have behavioral issues with several behavioral students, what we will find is that we are in need of a behavioral program, in dynamic need of a behavioral program. And we somehow make the budget work to have a behavioral program, because frankly, we will look at this potential event or that potential event, or this potential event. Holy cow, it may cost us X to do this program. But if we don't, and an injury occurs from this type of behavior, the Y is going to make X look very, very small. So then you open a behavioral program, and you get good people. And those good people do a good job. And all of a sudden, the behavioral incidents in classes go down and down and down until that year when you've got a budget problem, and somebody says, "Well, wait a minute. Look in the behavioral classroom. The averages of the kids, the teachers, the behavioral customs. That's ridiculous. My God, there's three FTE there. We need to go get it." We forget that the reason it's down there is because we do a good job. And I think the SRO program is going to tend to follow those. Ladies and gentlemen, I appreciate the time. Thank you very much for the opportunity, and thank you for hosting our students as well.
You betcha. Thanks.
With that, I will turn to a very brief mayor's report. And the only thing in the last couple of weeks that I would like to bring to attention is Saturday night's first artist's presentation at the high school in honor of Ron and Marilyn Wynn. And they raised a few funds for the arts program at the high school, and the performances were all wonderful and had a really good time at that. That, and while on the topic of arts, we have an application for the last slot on our Arts Commission from Aaron Mark. So.
I move we appoint Aaron Mark to the Arts and Culture Commission.
Second?
Second.
In favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And with that, I think we have a fall Arts Commission for the first time in a while. And we hope that they can go forward.
Next thing you know, there'll be a lunar eclipse.
Last one. So, turning to reports from the council rats, the council committee. Could you tell us about the eclipse?
I saw it, but I can't tell you much about it. You're the scientist. I would like to report, however, on the Monmouth Library. Very pleased to have attended on Saturday with manager mature the volunteer recognition party at the Monmouth Library. And I think we often forget the amount of work that is done by those volunteers. It's not glamorous work. Those folks were recognized for shelving books, for cleaning DVDs as they come back into the library, for all manner of jobs that really make our paid professional and current professional library staff be able to do their job, which is to continue to share information and have great information and reading literacy in our communities. So really great event, lovely to see folks there. Some age range, I think you probably had about eighties to thirteen-year-old there being recognized for their help and their work. So that was really exciting. And the library's going through some spring spruce up, getting some painting done on Mondays when the library is closed, so that we have a nice fresh space for spring and summer reading program.
Very good. Go ahead. Counselor Schaefer, Parks and Rec.
Mayor and council, thank you. I attended the April ninth Parks and Rec Board meeting. We had a great presentation from Alex Womack from the Western Oregon University Art Club. He presented to the Parks and Rec Board seven, I believe, different designs for the Gentle Woods Park mural, redoing that. And the board, redoing that, putting up a new mural, I guess is a better way to say. They, the board agreed on two different designs to send back. One had color, one didn't, so they would like them to come back with both with full color. And they had a few tweaks on them. And they are hoping for the next meeting to have those back. And hopefully, the finish date for the mural will be early June, hopefully, not late June, but before the kids go back home, because Mark did say he did not want to be out there painting the mural. So hopefully, that'll happen.
He's a man of many towns, Mark Fancy.
I've got a line someplace.
So that was, that was really neat to see. All the designs were very, varied, different, very different ideas. And they did settle on something that kind of seemed like was more Western themed. So it's going to be, turn out really nice. And then they also wanted to mention that the garden and book sale at the library, I believe, will be May third. I think that's the first Saturday in May. And also, they did mention the Arbor Day planting will be April 26. There'll be two options, one off of Highway 51 in Heffley Street, and then Craven Street and Jackson de Powell. So there's two different plantings they're going to be doing. And then the last thing was the water for the fountain will be turned on, I believe, May first. And the parks and restrooms will be turned on prior to Easter, is what I got. So hopefully, we have water at the bathrooms at the parks.
No, yes, perfect.
Close?
This week?
This week.
This week. Perfect.
Very good.
Oh, I have one more note. There was a note about the dog park seeing thin grass, and they do know of that and that Russ is going to be trying some different strategies in this spring and fall to alleviate that in the nears coming, so potentially plugging it.
Astro turf.
Astro turf?
Kidding.
So that is known and is going to be addressed to those concerned.
Okay. Thank you. Counselor Carey.
Mr. Mayor, members of the councils, the tree board met on April 10. And to sort of fill in some of the gaps that Counselor Schaefer had regarding the tree planting, that will occur on the 26th. That's how we'll celebrate Arbor Day. That's two Saturdays out. And for those that are going to be planting and assisting, a nine a.m. gathering in Gentle Woods Park. And then they'll disseminate out from there. The plantings will be on Powell between Craven and High Street. And I walked that area, and it's, it'll really be beneficial to fill that in on the planter strips. And that would be east of 99 in that sort of neighborhood there. And then also, on Craven, around, sort of wrapped around north to Main Street. Again, some obvious strips that are open and would be very much enhanced with a tree in there. The other option on 51, you know, Mark Fancy's been working hard with the ODOC people there, and there are some, they have some issues relative to with the planter strip and what the signs, signage that the trees might block and so forth. So there's more work to do on that. And Mark's done a nice job, and it articulated well, a long email thread with all of that. And, but it's just not going to happen this time. And, you know, in years past, the spring and fall plantings were sort of centered on the downtown. And we've gotten most of those areas pretty well picked off. And Powell has been one that's been a problem. A couple of years ago, made some real significant improvements on Powell. And now this will extend on the other way. And so it's good. It's good. It's good all the way around. And again, there's, I'm sure there'll be shovels, and there'll be.
Brian Spars with his tractor.
Yeah, thank goodness. And, you know, that, that in itself has increased the volunteerism, knowing you don't have to dig from ground zero down to this enormous hole that you have to have. So, yeah, Brian has been.
I remember when he raised his hand for Parks Board and mentioned that tractor. I couldn't quite imagine.
Man, no kidding. Yeah, that, so anyway, that concludes the report.
Okay. Thanks, John. Counselor Milligan, Historic Commission and Planning.
Sure. This is my first time attending the Historic Commission meeting. That was on April the second. And it's a fun group of people to work with. The Historic Preservation Month is the month of May. And the Historic Commission is planning an event on May the 18th. So those of you that are worn out from shoveling hog feed on the 17th, this is a nice relaxing, no tree planting, no. Sit down, listen to speakers, take a casual walking tour around the City of Monmouth, look at some of the historic homes, and that'll be on May 18th. And it starts at Gentle House at one o'clock. There'll be speakers until about two o'clock, and then there'll be a walking tour that goes from two to five of the community. And also, for those of you, it will be catered, so.
Can we get that on the Facebook page, maybe?
That's a good recommendation for staff.
What was that again? What time was that again?
May 18th from one to five.
One to five.
And the walking tour will go from two to five. So there'll be people who have homes that are on the walking tour brochure that will be at their homes to have people come. to have people come by and take a look through the homes.
Very nice.
Yeah, let's see. I left that meeting early because I'm also working on something else that I'll talk about when we get to council comments. But the planning commission didn't meet that night. They're not meeting again tomorrow night, so the next meeting will be May the 7th. So, then I'll have a report for May the 7th. Unless there's a public hearing or. No, okay. That's it.
One, one question. Where was that historic preservation event happening?
At Gentle House.
Gentle House, okay.
Any announcements?
Want to do this?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think so.
Why don't we do that or under a cost of council vote? I can do that.
This seems like a community announcement.
It is. The Monmouth Independence Community Foundation holds funds in trust for the Monmouth Bicentennial Fund. So, when we had our money left over from our other gala.
Sesquicentennial.
Sesquicentennial that Scott McArthur started for, we had some money left over. Well, now, that money, well, the endowment funds were invested, so we created an endowment so we can have a lot of fun in 2050.
2056.
2056.
Which is why the fund started with $2,056.
$2,056. Well, that fund is now up to by Jan. 1, almost $4,000. So, I know I am going to have a lot of fun at that meeting, or that celebration in 2056. So, I'll speak for you guys. But you've entrusted money to, to the community foundation for the city. And after a 5% reserve, the, we had an amazing return last year of over 20% in some of our funds. So, we have final numbers coming in May. So, certainly, if there are other donors out there that would like to add to that fund or other funds that we manage money for, or other organizations that would like us to manage money for them, we're certainly open to that. They just have to be in the boundaries of the central school district. But if any questions, we'll certainly keep going along. And hopefully, some 50 years from now or a little less than that, I guess, a little bit of that, I guess. We will have that money.
It's a report.
Yeah, that'd be awesome. Hopefully, like 50 grand, you can throw a heck of a report.
Any other community announcements?
Sure, I've got one. The meeting that I left early for was to go, I'm on the campaign committee for the Polk Fire District, the bond and levy that are coming up. And so, I want to encourage you to vote yes on both the levy and the bond. The numbers are 27, 111 for the levy, 27, 112 for the bond. And we're going to be out canvassing the next few weekends. So, look for us as we're walking through your neighborhoods. If you need more information, contact the Fire District. And they'll be more than happy to answer your questions. And I'm going to be getting with Chief Stein and see if we can have an informational meeting or two between now and the elections so that, at the Fire District, so people can have a chance to come and ask questions. But they've really done a lot better job of being clear with what this money's for this time than last time. They, they haven't reduced the amount of money that they're asking for by much, but they've spread the money out over a long period of time. So, instead of being 60 cents per thousand, now it's going to be 34 cents a thousand. The levy will last for five years, but the bond will last for 15 years. And, and the purpose is to, the levy is to help support the emergency response employees, to keep them fully staffed. And the bond is going to go to replace aging equipment, some that's completely out of service and that's been needed for quite a while. So, I encourage you to vote yes on levy 27, 111 and bond 27, 112.
Thank you.
I have something as well. I had an opportunity to learn more recently about the future of Western Oregon University. Now that as of April 4th, it was granted independent public university status. That status is unconditional. Some of the other smaller universities in the state are being granted conditional independent status and have some metrics that they need to reach. But President Mark Weiss is in the process of putting together a governing board trustees for the university. And those folks will be spending the next about 18 months, once they are appointed by the governor and confirmed by the legislature, planning how Western Oregon University will govern itself and how it will meet the goals that are set forth by the state's education plan. And I'm really impressed with the work that's being done. I'm really excited about the future of the university, the strength of the university, the 10-year business plan that was created to propose to the state that the, that the institution be separate and be independent. I'm sure that Councilor Silvernagle had a great deal to do with this. But really, some amazing work to determine this. And I'm, I'm sure that there'll be some really good people who are chosen to be on that governing board of trustees. And then, there'll be some people that got there by accident like me.
So, what Cease just said, council, did you catch that? We have, one of our councillors has been asked to serve on that board, which I think is wonderful. And, but Cease's activities outside of this company, she's so involved in this community. This is a wonderful vision to the university's board. Congratulations, Cease.
Well, thank you. The governor may be otherwise. But anyway, it's just really, I, thank you. I just really, really appreciate the work there and then the management team at the university has done to make this happen. I think it's going to be really amazing for our community and the relationship between the city and the community. I just see this being all positive, so very impressed. Of course, sadly, the, one of the first jobs of this board will be to do a search for a new president.
Yeah, that's always been. Okay, thank you. Any other community announcements? Andy, seeing now Scott, you're on.
Yep. So, we've got our third quarter status report. You guys can flip to that. I'm going to hold it on the floor. We've kind of walked up, just going to touch on the city council goals. The police station, that's actually moving along quite nicely. We've got a few things, you know, financing, property purchase, construction manager and architect, got the main contractor. And then, right now, they're doing value engineering and having an architecture firm and contractor go through and try to get down to final numbers. So, there's been good work there.
How's it looking, Scott, from your, you know, I understand it's so preliminary, but some of the features that we talked about way long ago when we started this process and the funds available and the initial look at the architectural.
It's going to be really tight. We might be doing some cutting down, trying to make it work. Yeah, and a couple of things that came up, one of those, oh, oh, yeah, okay. So, yeah, those have already cropped up.
Okay.
Yeah. So, at this moment, instead of being really happy, yeah, we can get everything we need, we're not quite there yet. It might not be there.
Yeah. Keep it. Thank you.
SDCs, the transportation SDC, we took a, kind of relook at everything. We reallocated projects, did some new numbers, got our consultant involved. Everything is actually with the consultant now. So, he's taking a look at it, seeing if he can bundle it and make it work. Interesting one, we just happened to get a little summary from a League of Organized Cities, someone's updating some numbers. And we're like lowest quarter in the state right now in total SDCs. And so, even with the adjustment we're making here, we'll still actually would be below average. Senior Center, just, just kind of heading into fundraising, they've had a little bit of some gaps with the finance on the Friends Group. We're going to get going and get the actual applications out there. So, later, hopefully in the summer, we'll know where we are. Facilities, next step, talk about that, the goal-setting session, we'll start working on the city hall building, come up with some ideas there, it might not move really for a while, but at least we'll kind of know where we're going on that. The Warren Street project, had a couple of good, good discussions recently and had a good presentation at the last meeting. So, that's making some nice project. And then, the Economic Development Task Force, that's potentially going to get fed into a visiting project. So, that might be kind of like result of that.
What's the target for adopting the goals that we set?
Your next meeting. Actually, have all the notes back to us and everything, so he'll say it.
Yeah, that's quick. Okay, anything highlights you want to hit on the?
Nothing particular. I always leave it open. If you guys have questions, then obviously, you can ask them now or you can ask them later.
Well, a question on, on SDCs, you, you made the comment about that. The one SDC is going to be brought back, correct?
Transportation.
Transportation. So, if we're still going to be in the quarter, do we want to have something in a process where we review them on a regular basis so we don't wait 22 years between each time?
Yeah, that's all we're going to do. And actually, just in case in point, we need to work on, on our water system. And that would be the operating side, the rate side plus the SDC.
So, potentially, there could be other SDCs coming back.
Oh, yeah. We're, I think we're going to keep on this. We're not going to, we're not going to do 20 years.
So, just go between.
Okay, yeah, all right. Yeah, that would make me feel a lot better. So, we're not having the huge jumps. And of course, everybody freaks out and you're like, well, it's 2% over 20 years versus, you know, 20% in one year. So, thanks.
I like going through these department goals and seeing the 100% that keep popping up. The folks who did a good job.
Well, in the senior center, do we have a, a quick update on that as far as where we are applying for grants and?
We haven't actually really applied. We're, we're still kind of getting the final packaging done. And we've been a little, little slow, the, there've been some shifts with the Friends Group on treasurer positions. We've had a little bit of, a little bit of a lag on getting numbers together because we're having the Friends be kind of lead out for a lot of the grants. So, it's a nice community group rather than. So, hopefully, we'll, we'll get on those, those are all the.
They have to have all the paperwork and markers.
Got you.
You know, when I read these, I looked at review, determine next steps on improved city facilities. I'm surprised the C is zero. Actually, there's, and it may not be quantifiable, but.
Yeah, you made a couple of decision points on where you want to go, so.
Yeah, yeah, so you're sort of low, you know.
Gives up a little credit there.
Yeah, I, I, I thought, oh, wait a minute, that's, that's, that could go quickly. And I am anxious to see, this has been one that's, that's been working for some time and that's updating the city job descriptions. And it sounds as though that's, that's continuing to.
Yeah, we're getting close to it.
Yeah. And that's, that's, that's good. And I mentioned this to Councilor Schaefer and Councilor Milligan, both, back in the, in the parks, the dog park thing. And it probably needs to be, if not just to revisit it, and maybe there's nothing found, what needs to be done. But sort of figure out what the relationship and then, and reporting lines and so on for the Friends Group would be to city staff as well as Parks and Rec. And like Steve, Councilor Milligan pointed out, there was a pretty good model for that with the library and, and senior center, so.
And they're fairly straightforward. Generally speaking, the way these things work partly, you have, you have a Friends Group out there that supports a facility. And then, they raise funds and then typically, then they say, hey, what do you like to do X? And so, you can run that by the Parks and Rec Board because they're the governing body. Check with staff, make sure you can actually install and make it work. And it can go the other direction, too. It can go either way, you know, the city could say, God, we could really use that X. You guys be willing to help us, you know, raise some money for that? And the key thing where I've seen them work really well is that everybody agrees. If, if the, you know, Friends Group, if the city comes to the Friends and they say, we think this is a priority and they don't, then they don't need to raise money for it and vice versa. If it's like, we'd really like to install this and staff says, wow, that's going to be really hard to maintain. Then we can say, no, it doesn't quite work. And then, everybody just, once you come to something that makes sense, you do it.
Well, it is a new group and, and one that, that we'd like to keep a little attention on. And so, just as long as, I mean, perhaps nothing more needs to be done, but just I wanted to know.
Yeah, and if we get, we get near some improvements, we'll.
Anyone else?
Just one, well, one last one on the Cassell. Are you guys finding that, that January, you're feeling good about that or?
Yeah, we actually, we, we put essentially a placeholder down. We actually signed up. We didn't have to put a bunch of money down. We had to put a little bit of money down, but it wasn't really too bad because if, for some reason, we didn't go that direction, which I can't imagine that we would not, they could actually roll that into the court conversion costs and training and everything. So, we didn't actually lose anything. So, we've actually put it down, basically deposited on that. And so, yeah, we're, we're thinking things are pretty good going into January. Okay? You indicate that worked for them, too.
And that's going to actually be able to talk to the meters now and?
That's a completely different issue. The, the, that's what we're doing with this, a lot of the functionality. But the, the metering issue, that's just a, it's a beast unto itself.
Okay, very good. All right.
And my question was about the courtroom improvements, the hardening of the dais being, having been on there for a long time now. And I guess I didn't realize that, I, I just, I guess I kept thinking, oh, that's going to happen soon, that's going to happen soon. And now, saying we need to determine if that's even possible. So, I, I didn't realize it was.
Yeah, we, yeah, with everything else going, we used to have a bit much time to do it.
Nice to see the video rate at 90%.
Yeah, just.
The other end, however.
Anyone else? Any citizens' comments tonight? I've got one citizen here, no comments. Very good. And with that, I'll turn to the business agenda and invite Russ to come up and talk to us about the Talmadge Road project, which I am thrilled to see us moving forward on. This kind of first came to my attention in the fall of 2010. I knew that kids were walking along there, but I started hearing from a lot of parents in that southeast part of the town expressing concern over school kids, particularly as we got Ash Creek online as an elementary instead of as an intermediate school, walking along the shoulder of, you know, basically. So, Russ, tell us about this.
Thank you, Mayor Oberst and council. Tonight, your packet for your consideration is an intergovernmental agreement between the city of Monmouth and Polk County for the construction of pedestrian improvements along Talmadge Road to include sidewalk. Previously, you've expressed interest in this, as Mayor Oberst suggested. And in the 2013-14 budget process, you approved allocation of $80,000 of transportation SDCs for participation in the construction of this project. The city has been working with Polk County to work toward this construction process for some time now in acquiring a necessary right of way and just this process of working toward an intergovernmental agreement. This stretch of, of Talmadge Road is between Madrona Avenue and the city limits of Independence. Currently, it does not have adequate pedestrian facilities. And as was just mentioned, it is a significant pedestrian route between a large residential neighborhood and three of central school districts facilities. An IGA is required for the transportation, the transfer of funds to pay for this construction improvement. In your packet is the intergovernmental agreement for your review and acceptance. This document's been reviewed by myself and the city attorney. Alternatives tonight would be to authorize city manager McClure to sign the document on behalf of Monmouth or to choose not to move forward with that at this time. Financial implications, authorizing this IGA will commit $80,000 in transportation SDC funds towards construction of these pedestrian improvements on Talmadge Road. Staff recommendation is that city council proceed with authorizing city manager McClure to sign this document.
Russ, as I recall, part of this stretch is in city jurisdiction and part of it is county, is that correct?
That is correct. The, the actual road right of way is under the county's jurisdiction. And then, the adjacent property is partially within the city of Monmouth city limits and in the county city, uh, county limits.
Okay. Which I'm sure has made this whole process a whole lot more fun. Do we take over maintaining the roadway or is the county going to hang on to the road?
The county will maintain the right of way.
Okay, good. Any questions, council?
None of this, none of this project is in the city of Independence.
Correct.
Or the other side of the street.
You cross old Talmadge Road where it runs behind Mendy's, that's the dividing line. And on one side of the street is Independence with a sidewalk, and on the other side of the street is county without one.
Well, the cows and stuff, I think.
Yeah, that side of it also. So it's, it's quite the jumble in there.
Yeah, it seems like it's quite a ways east for, for Independence to have, no, I don't know, but, but you guys know that. And so is the, does the county have any financial commitment to this?
Yes, they do. And they will be, they'll be managing the project as well.
So what's the total cost of the project?
The, the 80,000 that we've committed was 50% of the project.
Cool.
And they will manage the project. That's a good.
Russ, what are you going to do without a project to manage, are you?
I still have projects.
Yeah, I'm sure we can find something for you to do. So you have.
Yeah, so when we write this, our full obligation is 80,000 regardless of what the cost is to the county.
That's correct.
Okay.
So if it comes in under budget, is it still 80 or is it 50/50? If it comes in at 100?
It would still be 80.
Okay. And if it comes in at 100. So you still have any?
Well, and also, and not as much on our portion of the road, but there are places where that road is really breaking down. I mean, it's cracked down a little of it for a good three or four blocks. Are there other, has there been any discussion in this whole thing about, about the road? I mean, sites that are falling, falling down in places?
Right. The, the stretch, the 770 feet that is included in this project will include asphalt restoration. So that's the primary stretch that is coming apart. I won't speak for the county as to how they'll, they'll manage the remaining portions of that, but I know that they're always looking for opportunities to improve their, their roads.
The whole thing's getting kind of scary.
Well, I'll say congratulations. I know this has been kind of talked about off and on for a couple of years. And to not have to take over right of way and only pay for essentially sidewalk or a portion of sidewalk, I consider that a major victory. So kudos to you. I couldn't have negotiated it better myself.
Wow.
Jesse, you have anything?
And just quick, because this is private property that we're building on, is that right?
We're buying.
We, we acquired private property to extend the right of way. So it'll be constructed within the street, the road right of way.
That was part of the thing I was.
Right. That's what.
So I need a motion to direct Scott to sign the IGA.
I move that the city manager be authorized to sign the attached intergovernmental agreement between the City of Monmouth and Polk County for the construction of bicycle pedestrian improvements along Talmud Road.
And moved and seconded in favor.
Aye.
Opposed.
Good work.
Yay.
Oh, Russ, what's the timeframe on this? End of the summer?
Before, before September. And so September, something was identified in the IGA.
Okay, very good.
We're going to try.
Before school starts.
Before school starts.
Very good. I'm excited. And now we need to revise our financial policies. Mr. Gunnmeyer, tell us about that, please.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. So in your packet, this evening, is a resolution that would adopt change to the fiscal policies, specifically the stabilization policy. So that policy sets the minimum reserve or the minimum amount you would carry forward into next year for our operating funds, which would be the general fund, the three utility funds, the street fund and the building fund. And those are the funds that have personnel services in it. So the idea behind that policy, when it was adopted back in 2010, was that it would provide a, I guess, kind of a failsafe or almost like an early warning system, sort of like a check engine light it does in your car. It comes on and you notice that and you think, oh, maybe there's something there I should look at and you investigate. That's, that's kind of the idea behind the stabilization policy. It provides a benchmark that says, hey, if you're here, you should look at this. And so it's, it's a good policy when it was put in place, but one of the things we found is we've been using it each year as we start to get into the budget, like we have been. Each year, we would, Scott and I would both look at each other and go, how do we calculate that? It's not very intuitive. And it's because it, that policy, the way it's calculated, our current stabilization policy, it's calculated off of revenues. And included in the revenues is the beginning working capital. So you're looking at, at what you need to carry forward next year for a minimum kind of reserve that you would have for expenses, but you're doing that off of current year revenues. And so it's just not as intuitive as if you were instead to base that calculation off of a percentage of your operating expenses. So that'd be like your personnel, your children's services, debt service and transfers. Those expenses are ones that are in general less flexible in their timing as compared to, say, like capital where if you're really tight in a budget year, you potentially could say, well, I'm going to forego a capital expense. It's pretty tough to do that, say, with personnel expenses. So, so if you look at those expenses and calculate your minimum reserve off of those operating expenses, that's a, that's a more intuitive way to do it. And so what we thought to do, just kind of, we played with some different expense levels or different percentage levels. And we, we felt that a 25% level for all of the operating funds would be good with the exception of the general fund. And we felt that 15% was more appropriate there when we're talking kind of what is our real minimums. And the reason we felt that we could go lower there is because the general fund typically has revenues and expenses that are, the potential for unplanned negative events that could occur, the risk is lower in that fund. There's less large capital commitments that we have in that fund. And the revenues tend to be more predictable. They're pretty stable. And so we felt that a 15% was, was appropriate intuitively. And then we, we checked that against, we did a calculation, it's in the staff board, that where we looked at for fiscal year 13, 14, how much did we spend in the first four months of the year against what we took in? And it turns out that that percentage level would, we would just have enough carry forward from 15% that would carry us through that, that cash reserve coming into the year, plus the revenues that we'd be getting before we, we pick up the property taxes and remember, we would still be okay and make it through the first four months. So that's really what you're looking for, for a minimum in this, is what's the number that will get me through the, the first four months of the year before we have the property tax problem. So timing of this, the reason we bring it forward now is because it's, it's right on our minds. We're going through the budget process. Also, we felt it was appropriate as there's been some consideration given to some thoughtful and measured kinds of potential drawdowns to the general fund reserve in particular. And so, you know, knowing, hey, what is the real minimum that we should have? That's, that's a good thing to know, you know, kind of a fine tuning of the, of the check engine light, so to speak. So we felt that that was appropriate to do now. And the other thing we looked at is, well, had we done this last year, what would it look like? We compared the old reserve policy to the current, I should say, the current reserve policy and if adopted, then the new policy. What, what would that look like? What do the percentages look like? And they're, they're really, they're pretty similar. And we felt that in looking, we're not quite, we're still working on the finalization of the, of the 14, 15 budget, but we don't feel like if this policy was adopted or not, it's not going to change discussion for next year's budget. This is really just an effort, I think, for us internally to have a more intuitive, easier to understand way to quickly gauge where, where's the bottom in our operating funds and just kind of sets us up for having a good process forward and knowing where we need to be. So for considerations to adopt this or to change any of the calculations ever, would you like to consider that?
I'm going to start in here again. Mr. Miller's guy.
Well, yeah, so I guess I've had a little bit of a hard time getting my hands around, there isn't a lot of differences here. But the segregation, I guess, of the general fund from the other, I guess, that, that one, at least in my mind, is a little bit of a question, I guess. So I guess, yeah, I'm hearing that you feel it's stable or revenues is, so that's really the basis for that one versus the other.
It's a combination.
The big one there is capital. Like, if you got to add a minimum in the water fund, like it could come down to like $200,000. That's one line or one component of the plan. You're done. You have nothing. Stuff like that just doesn't really happen in the general fund. And if there's a striking balance, that's, that's a minimum we set. I would always want a little bit higher than that, that that's how I would operate. But we also don't want to be sitting around kind of in a state where we are right now, where we just have these big reserves, just saying they're idle, that we actually could put to work. And I wouldn't want to get into something where we've kind of snuck at ourselves saying, oh, yeah, we need to keep this level when there's not really that much going on. Different situation when I was in Colorado, had sales tax in play, I was more cautious, you know, because those things went pop really fast. We just don't have that. So that's another thing with, we don't have anything that surprises us in the general fund. A patrol car can go out. That's, that's going to extend up things. I guess City Hawk could fall down. Which might.
So, yeah, so I guess that would have been the only one. Please, if you're okay with the, with the answer there.
There's a huge.
Justin, you have anything?
I don't.
Yeah?
Yeah, I guess a couple of questions. One of the remarks you make on the 25% minimum is, you know, that gives us three months of revenues if nothing came in. So then I go back and I go, okay, so let's look about three months of revenues. And I'm looking at, okay, so that means nobody's going to pay their sewer and water bill for three months, everybody, or their light bill. How likely is, obviously, I mean, I know that's a rationale, but 25, I guess, just on its, as a number, just seems a little bit, I mean, I know we want to be conservative and certainly you're right, and a component issue, you know, could, could be there. I, I, I think somewhere probably the 20 range is, is probably good. I mean, 25 is overly conservative and I think we can, we can do that. Obviously, we've been keeping well over, I mean, this is, again, this is a document that, you know, is kind of a guidepost. So certainly, you guys have been more conservative than our guideposts over the years.
Case in point that this year, the water fund actually is under 25%. And actually, one thing that's pretty common when we got the scan, there are actually three months operating as a relative center benchmark. Some, it ranges from 15 to 25 is kind of the basic. Yes, 25 is the better side of the fence. Another one, which is the calculation change makes sense, is you have an interesting distortion that happens is if you're, if we're using beginning balance as part of the calculation, the bigger the fund gets, AKA power and light, the bigger the reserve you need. So the richer and more comfortable, I need more of a reserve. And then conversely, you can spiral yourself down pretty quick, too. So I think the recalculation is the key thing. If you guys want to discuss, you know, hit a different target, we can certainly have a discussion.
It's funny, I just, I just came across this recently at the school district, too. I looked at our policy and said, by the way, it doesn't clarify if the percentage is on operating. It says revenue, it doesn't say operating revenue versus beginning fund balance revenue or anything. And I said, I, I'm not comfortable with that. So I'm actually bringing up the same question. But I do appreciate you taking a look and determining that we don't need to have a 213% in fund balance in some of our funds that we can actually spend on. No, I, I'm all in favor of this to clarify. And I'm fine with the, I'm fine with the amount that comes on 25%.
Yeah, and I looked over the policy. I, I mean, I, I wanted a policy that works for you guys, you know, not one that's got you so tied up where you can't figure out how to make the numbers work or you just get so frustrated, you just do whatever. And if this clarifies it for you, that that's.
And actually, a real personal, it would be helpful. Poor Mark, this has bothered him. He's got lots of other things he could be doing. He's spent a lot of time rethinking this and going through. So it would be nice to get a better benchmark and then we can.
Yeah.
Well, I'm having a little difficult time getting my, I didn't get started on this until, until last night and then, and then again this afternoon. So I'm still trying to process the whole thing. One of the things that does, and it's been, it served, this policy served us well by, you know, basically, if we have revenues coming in, as I understand, by, in effect, policy, we'll only spend 25, or 75% of that. And we're going to maintain 25% in sort of, you know, as a, in reserve. You know, these, these are revenues that are coming in from either ratepayers, wouldn't be taxpayers necessarily, but, but ratepayers. And, you know, I, I'm still trying to work out whether it's, it's good policy to only spend, you know, 75% of what we bring in.
Actually, what it would be doing is, if you were, the calculation would be, the simplest way is if you look in your, on the expense side of the budget, the budget bottom number in the fund, that number, if you, if you then take away the reserve, the contingency and the capital, you take those out, the remaining number, then you would take 25% of that. That's what you would be carrying forward into the next year. And the reason that, I guess, the, the thinking behind why you would want to carry that into the next year is because that's 25, that 25% is a buffer for any kind of, you know, like unforeseen sort of fluctuation in, in your, the things that might go wrong, capital or revenues. And the point earlier about the, you know, say like the sewer fund, the likelihood that we're just not going to have revenues there, that's unlikely, but there certainly is a possibility for significant, you know, a violation say that comes up and we have to deal with that, you know, the sewer plant. Those things can happen and all of a sudden, you've got a big bill sitting in front of you. So that's, that's the idea behind it.
Yeah, it's a good, it, it, it's a good one. It's just, it's just a sort of order of magnitude for me, whether, whether that's, whether we could be spending a portion of that, you know, for ratepayer benefit.
It's interesting, actually, if you, if you compare the, the current policy to the new policy, the new policy for most of the operating funds actually reduce, reduces the dollar amount that we are calling our minimum.
So the change in calculation changes.
Right. And so what that's doing is that's actually freeing up, say, potentially money that you could spend in the current year for services or whatever.
Yeah, like the one that's really striking is that the sewer fund and the current policy, because we have that big carrier, we did a real good job on the capital projects, the plant, that we had savings. So under that calculation, we need 689,000. And if you go to the new one, we need 366, which is more realistic. And the key thing is maybe look at is that on an ongoing basis, the money coming in, we're spending. So people, what we charge on rates being cycled through every year. This is just the benchmark. It's, it's kind of like in your household, you're like going, God, you know, we spend every penny and you go, I'm going to work up until I get, you know, $2,000 in the bank, then we can be done. Then we can go back to kind of spending in and out just out of curiosity.
I would maybe add to that the risk, when you, when you implement a plan like this, as opposed to what we've had, say, like in the sewer fund, so we, we're effectively dropping the, the amount that we are saying we're going to, you know, be disciplined and carry forward. The risk is that there is some big capital thing that happens next year. And, and then that's not a large enough number. But I feel like if we're doing a good job in our planning of the capital projects that we are going to be doing in the future, that that minimizes some of that risk. And, and I think we do do that. We, we do a five-year capital projects plan. And, and so, you know, if you're planning, if your planned capital out in the future, you kind of know what that is, know what's coming, and you've done a pretty good job with that. And the likelihood that this amount that we carry forward, it's not going to be used necessarily, it, it, it isn't planned to be used by those kinds of projects. It's there kind of in case this other unforeseen thing comes up.
And Mark, actually, that goes to one of my concerns. I was thinking of is, is if we have it at a high number, that not necessarily you or Scott, but down the road, as this policy is, it kind of gives staff a false sense of, of not doing facility or master plans in these different ratepayer funds. And we don't have a good, whether it's too much or too little, you know, kind of lulls us to sleep a little bit because, oh, I got that 25%. So that's, that's kind of the downside of you do less planning, probably the bigger the number, because I got this.
the number, because I got this. And so that's what I'm saying is maybe 20, maybe be a better number. Kind of puts us above the 15, but not necessarily 25, because in a blush, that's, you know, that seems high.
I guess, but I'll throw out that I de-link those. I don't think a 20 or 25 has any difference on whether you do proper planning and you're laying things out. I'm not going to get low by, oh, well, I got 25%. I can just not.
I don't think you guys are.
I don't think a lot of people would. I think kind of a typical city manager type and a finance director wouldn't.
Okay.
Wouldn't get there. Or maybe it could be that we're both just amazing.
Yeah.
Let's just go on the record. No, you guys are awesome and, and my nickname for Mark is Sandbagger, so appreciate that.
Okay, so we have before us Resolution 1773. And if there is no further discussion, I would appreciate a motion on this.
I move approval of Resolution 1773, which adopts a change to the stabilization policy calculation.
And is there a second on that?
Second.
Move and second it. And Ellen?
Councilor Carey?
Aye.
Councilor Schaefer?
Aye.
Councilor Meyer?
Aye.
Councilor Coons?
Aye.
Councilor Milligan?
Aye.
Councilor Silvernagle?
Aye.
And I vote yes to, that doesn't count. And with that, we'll adopt that change in the fiscal policy. And are there any council comments tonight? And hearing none, I would ask for a motion. Oh, I'm sorry.
Just one thing, the appeal deadline for the Mar Brothers' appeal of the Luba decision expired last Thursday and there were no appeal files, so that decision affirmed and you're done with the Mar Brothers.
Take a breath.
Yeah, take a breath.
And Mr. Mayor? Just a note, to make it easier, I only have one presentation after this, so if you want to take a five-minute break, just stay where you are and then I can grab a drink.
We want to grab a drink.
You definitely got to stay where I am.
No, I stayed. He did.
Yes, that works for me and for McClure. We will have work session from the DS tonight.
I believe that we adjourn the regular session. Thanks, Stace, adjourn the work session.
Thank you. In favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Take five.